Okay, good evening everyone and welcome to the Nevada PTA Town Hall regarding the most recent special session. My name is Rebecca Garcia and I'm the president of the Nevada Parent Teachers Association. And we welcome everybody who's tuning in via Facebook Live. This is part of a series of moving forward town halls that we've been doing over the last couple of months and all are available to watch on Facebook or YouTube. And we are really looking forward to our panelists tonight and the insights that they will bring as we discuss the special session that just wrapped up. First though, let me introduce my co-host tonight, Kalief Fox-Miller.
Hi, everybody. My name is Kalief Fox-Miller and I am the state legislative chair for the Nevada PTA. Tonight, we are going to look at the recent special session held by the legislature. Specifically, we are going to discuss the process and potential impact of the decisions and cuts that were made during the special session. First, let's introduce our guests.
So first, we have somebody who brings a wealth of policy knowledge with her. Nancy Brune is the founding executive director of the Gwynne Center, a statewide policy research center providing data-driven analysis on a broad range of policy issues. Nancy has extensive national and international public policy experience on a wide range of issues, especially a great emphasis on those Nevada-specific issues right now. And so, thank you Nancy for joining us tonight.
Thanks for having us.
Next is Michelle Rendell. Michelle is a reporter for the Nevada Independent and someone many of us follow on Twitter to keep up with the special session. She spent six years at the Associated Press before coming to the Nevada Independent. She alternated between Carson City and Las Vegas to cover the legislature campaign and Nevada and Utah breaking news for the national and international audiences. Welcome, Michelle.
Thanks so much for having me.
And last but not least, we have Amanda Morgan. Amanda is the executive director of Educate Nevada Now and a civil rights attorney with experience in education law and policy. You are also a CCSD graduate, so you have strong Nevada roots. I didn't ask that of the other two, but I know Nancy's not from here originally, but it's fun to have some Nevada roots on the panel as well.
Thanks for having me.
All right, so I will go ahead and get started. I'm going to start with Michelle. And Michelle, could you start by giving us a little overview of how the special session was called and what the focus of the session was intended to be?
Sure. So basically, what happened is Nevada set its budget based on conditions that were happening really in late 2018 and early 2019. And at that time, really, the economy was better than it had been for a very long time. Things were looking up. We were in a position where we were finding money because projections were improving month over month. So the legislature finalized its budget basically May-June of 2019 during the good times. Of course, we saw with the pandemic setting in, all the major sources of revenue that fund education and state government operations really tanked. You know, we're largely supported by sales tax. And so, when businesses close and activity slows down, it just takes a huge hit on the state budget. There's also payroll taxes and, you know, a couple other major revenue sources. Sometimes people think, oh, the marijuana money is going to get us through this, but that's really not a large part of the budget. It's really things like sales tax that drive the bus. So that took a dive. We're halfway through a budget cycle here, July 1st, the fiscal year, so we're heading into the second year of a two-year budget that we created. Everything was doing way worse than we thought it was. And Nevada, unlike Congress, has to have a balanced budget. We can't deficit spend. We don't have really credit cards. So it was the legislature's task to really choose where to make these cuts so that we could essentially have a budget that's 25% smaller than the legislature approved during the 2019 session. So the governor calls a special session. He says, you know, legislators were coming back basically six months before you're supposed to. And the governor proposed some cuts that he wanted, and legislators had to weigh in and kind of approve those. So that's why we were in a special session. It lasted for 12 days and ended last Sunday. So I hope that kind of explains things.
Thank you for that overview. I think, you know, I've been in Nevada 15 years now, and I think it was a couple of years into living in Nevada that I realized that our legislature only met every other year for a couple of months. All of a sudden, what? So I think for people who aren't familiar with Nevada, you know, we have so many transplants. How that kind of works is just such an unusual, because we're one of only two, three states, I believe, in the nation that has that type of a cycle. So Nancy, these cuts proposed by the governor's office really fell heavily on education and healthcare, which obviously, everybody was really concerned about because those are issues that not only do people care about, but in the midst of a pandemic, they're so critical. Can you give a little bit more context about why that happened and why that kind of always seems to happen in Nevada when we hit a budget crunch?
Yeah. Well, I mean, most of our general fund revenues go to fund health and education, so it's not a surprise that when we have to cut our budget, those are the biggest agencies, right? So Department of Education, or education, for example, accounts for almost, or a little over a third of our general fund spending. So obviously, if we're trying to find some savings, those are the natural big areas to cut. In terms of like the actual, and the good news is that the cuts were, I don't know if it's a good news, but the cuts were, session open was for bigger cuts, so they looked at trying to cut, you know, over $200 million from health. And by the time the session had ended, they were able to, you know, find some additional funds. And so, the legislature ended up cutting about $150 million to health services, about $162 to education, although they're now allocating $50 million of CARES funding to education. So total is about a little over $100 million in education funding. And then the other area where they cut a lot of funding, which is really worrisome, especially as we think about trying to train our workforce, some of our dislocated workers, is our higher ed budget. And that was about $135 million in cuts. So the agencies and services that support education system, workforce development, and our healthcare system all took a big hit, but for the reasons that I mentioned, especially because we didn't also look at revenue in this session. So the pie, in some sense, was fixed as we went in and worked through the cuts.
That seems like a pretty common theme that we have in Nevada, that when there's a crisis, when budget cuts come, a lot of times, that revenue doesn't get changed. And so, we contract to meet whatever income's coming in, right? And I appreciate that you pointed out the higher ed, which also, one of those acronyms I've learned being here long enough, ENCHE, the Nevada System of Higher Education. I think a lot of people think of that as UNLV and UNR, but really, it covers, like you said, so much, the community colleges and really key workforce development programs that are important to diversifying our economy. So it's one of those things to ask that question of, now those are reduced, how do we move forward with that? So, thank you.
Exactly.
And Amanda, I'm going to start this question with you, but others may want to chime in as well. Education was obviously a hot-button issue this session. Can you provide some details on what cuts were made to the education budget and what these cuts will look like for schools and students?
Absolutely. So as Nancy mentioned, it's about $160 million. They started the special session with a set amount of cuts, and it was pretty much mirrored by the end of sessions. There wasn't a lot of movement, unlike the health budget. They actually lost about $1 million at the end of it, but kind of not really anything significant. So, you know, it's definitely something that families and students are going to feel in their schools, maybe some schools more than others. Just to talk through some of the cuts, one of the cuts was class size reduction dollars. As many folks know, we have some of the largest class sizes in the country. They cut about $6 million, which wasn't, you know, a huge significant amount of the total $156 million, but it's still something that we need to kind of take note of, given our crisis in this state. We lost all of our Read by Grade 3 dollars. So these are dollars that are dedicated for like reading specialists and reading interventionists in schools. Specific schools get this. We have about a less than 50% proficiency rate in third grade classrooms in reading. So again, something we really need to take note of. Something that the superintendent said during the session was, we won't necessarily be losing these positions. So a lot of these specialists will be moving over into filling vacancies because they are educators, but still significant that we're losing these critical supports for students. On top of that, probably the most controversial cut was the SB178. So these are dollars that targeted low-income and English learner students that aren't receiving services in Zoom and Victory Schools, that really need additional support due to poor academic achievement. All of those dollars were cut, about $70 million. So schools that receive those funds are really going to notice those dollars being gone. We also are going to notice that next year when we try to transition to our new weighted funding formula, because these dollars were designed to support that. So that's really critical. Those are probably the big-ticket items. There's some other things. So if you're a teacher, you'll notice that you're not going to get your teacher reimbursement for supplies. That'll be something that's pretty important to a lot of folks out there. Maybe some other things like the teacher incentive for Title I schools and things like that. So, you know, these are definitely things that people are going to feel in the classroom. As Nancy mentioned, there is the $50 million in CARES Act dollars. I think there was a little bit of misunderstanding or misinformation when that was announced, because those dollars cannot be used to backfill some of these programs that are being lost. They must be used for specific COVID-related expenses. So, you know, think of things like connectivity or providing technology. They can't be used for things that were already budgeted and lost, and they have to be spent by December 30th. These are not rules that were set by the governor. These are rules that are set by the government. So it's going to be difficult to provide for things like staffing that might be a year-long expense with those CARES Act dollars. So really important and critical that those dollars came around, because we're going to have those issues this coming year. But, you know, we don't want to get kind of some misunderstanding about how they can be used, especially like SOTs, when they come together and talk about their budgets. You don't want them going, hey, what about that $50 million? Because that can't be used in those ways.
I really appreciate you saying that, because I sit on two SOTs, both my kids' schools. And school organizational teams are only in Clark County. So for those listening from districts across Nevada that don't have school organizational teams, in Clark County, it's comprised of parents and teachers and sports staff that advise the principal on the budget. And so, you know, both of the schools that my kids attend received SB178. And so, as I shared in testimony, like for me, I actually know the names of the people whose salary that pays. You know, those are people that I know that support my kids. So while I agree there's vacancies in the district, hopefully, schools have other funding sources. They might be able to move around. It still is a hard cut. Nancy, I think you wanted to say something.
Yeah, I was just going to, Amanda did a great job, I think, identifying sort of the bigger, more important programs. But it was interesting to sort of look line by line at all the different programs, just to provide some context. And so, if you look at all the programs, there's some winners, which I think speak well to our priorities. And I applaud the governor's office and the legislature for being mindful about the cuts. So if you look at all the cuts, you know, we do protect the parental engagement program, the parental involvement and family engagement program, some of the smaller literacy programs, and there's a big, you know, a lot of the supports for our teachers and educators were protected, or cut very minimally. So educator effectiveness programs, the professional development programs, the Great Teaching and Leading Fund. So I think, you know, at the end of the day, you could argue that the state is protecting and honoring the important work that our teachers do. And then some of the losers from the budget cuts, which sort of makes sense, I think if we're thinking that we're not going to be back in the classrooms full-time anytime soon, a lot of the cuts were around the school safety program, whether it be funding for hardware and, you know, gates and, you know, metal detectors, or things such as the mental health, social support programs, addressing anti-bullying, or social and emotional well-being. And one could argue that, bullying may not be an issue right now. Another program that was cut was the school gardens, which I think, in theory, school gardens are great, but given that we're not going to be at school anytime soon, there's no one there to take care of them. So I think a lot of the cuts reflect the fact that for the next, you know, three to six to nine months, we're going to be living a different environment. And so, it's sort of almost a smart, I guess, smart removal of funds, if you will.
I can see how you-
There's some logic behind it.
There was some logic in some things. I do think, though, a couple of follow-ups. So Read by Grade 3, the funding was removed, but there's actually specific requirements in the Nevada law due to bills that relate to how kids progress. I have a child moving into fourth grade, and she actually was the first class. So she is actually the first class. It should have been retained had that law stayed written as it originally was. So it was a law that I followed very closely. So they removed the funding to provide the additional supports, but they didn't change any of the requirements in the law.
Not that I'm aware of. Yeah, that's correct. And I think a lot of folks are just, and if you heard, listened to this session, you kind of heard them say, well, we're going to find ways to support these students. And I think, I think that's true. I mean, it's so unprecedented. There's no blue book, you know, no way to know what's going to happen. But I also wanted to point out, and that's a good point that Nancy brought up, is there are some definite bright spots. And I think one of the things that we were really looking closely at is, are they going to honor the per-people funding? Because that's really what funds the majority of district expenses. So I think it's worth giving them credit that they did everything they could not to cut that. And we know there's other parts of government that really got, I mean, ENCHE's a perfect example. I mean, it's just devastating. So, you know, it's horrible, and we definitely want to work towards finding good revenue solutions to build ourselves back up. But, you know, there were some bright spots during the session.
So I'm going to inject another question to Michelle. And so, you were covering this as a reporter. And you've covered the legislature for several years. Did you notice anything, anything jump out to you in the education discussions, whether it was testimony or things like that, about how that was handled and the cuts that were made?
I think one of the trends that I noticed, having had covered legislative sessions in Nevada since 2011, is really that that was a period where, like what we're seeing now, you know, that was a sad session, a lot of budget cutting going on. But since then, I mean, 2013, we got Zoom schools. 2015, we got a bunch of other programming. Then we started funding things. Then we started looking at SB178 and thinking about, how are we going to do weighted funding? So we kept adding things on. And this was a session when all of these add-ons sort of got sloughed off. And I think the one, we're talking about the per-people funding, I mean, there were some increases made last session, sort of modest increases, and those remained. So that stayed, and that was a good thing. But a lot of the programs that we wanted to see, like, is a reading specialist, you know, we wanted to have kind of this, I don't know, if you call it a control group, but you have a specific intervention. You see, like, are people, you know, when we have a literacy specialist and a very targeted group of students, is that going to really be an intervention that helps and improves performance? So I think all those projects that kind of got started over the last decade are really just at a standstill now. We had to cut those first. I think it would be a concern maybe in the future, if things get worse, like, are we going to have to cut into kind of the per-people funding? But yeah, it was a reversal of what I've been covering for several years.
Yeah, I think a lot of us who followed it saw the same thing, that it's, you know, those investments that had been made were what got stripped away, like you said. But that's also something that happens frequently in education. That's a trend. Programs get investment, and then for different reasons, the investment's pulled before you actually have a track record to see whether or not that program was successful. Nancy, obviously, what school will look like, as you referenced just a few minutes ago, is a major concern. Tonight, we have, I believe it's five school districts across Nevada are meeting for their school board meetings tonight to discuss reopening plans. The Nevada State Department of Education just released, with the governor, just released a new directive a few minutes ago, before we came on, about reopening. That wasn't necessarily a set topic of the legislature, but it came up a lot in conversation. Was there any action that was taken to address issues related to reopening schools or help support that process, which we know is way more complicated than just a normal back-to-school year?
So, I mean, I think some of the work preparing schools for reopening had been done before with some of the tranches of the CARES Act funding, so the ESER funds. And then during the special session, the governor announced an additional dispersment of some of the CARES Act funding. I think there's $33 million to support schools as they develop their reopening plans. And so, the funding was for personal protective equipment, masks, cleaning supplies, et cetera. So it wasn't part of the legislation or the special session, but during the special session, the governor announced an additional dispersment of our remaining $200 million of CARES funding to support schools as they think about reopening.
Thank you.
And Michelle, I wanted to ask you another question about the financial piece. Obviously, mining was another big media piece in this process with the special session. Would you give us some background on why mining is always a hot-button issue in Nevada?
So, one of the issues is that mining is counter-cyclical. So when the rest of the economy is going bad, the price of gold is way high, because people want something they can kind of put their trust in, and that's, you know, something physical like gold. So Nevada is one of the world's largest gold producers. We're definitely the largest gold producer in the country. And if we were a country, we would be the fifth-largest gold producer in the world, behind several countries. Nevada has always, since the beginning, had a special place in the Constitution for mining. I mean, that was a condition of even getting the Constitution passed in 1864, was that it was not going to tax mining as a whole. It was going to tax just the net proceeds. So the structure we have now is that mining in 2019 made almost $8 billion in gross proceeds, but they're allowed 12 or 13 deductions in state law. So the cost of doing business, the cost of the equipment, the cost of paying health benefits to their employees, all these they can deduct. At the end of the day, in 2019, what was left after taking all those deductions was mining made $2.5 billion. And then the portion that actually went to the state general fund of that $2.5 billion in net proceeds was $61 million. So I think it's something, I mean, it's like along the lines of 1% or 2% taxation rate. So people at this time, when we're in a situation where our sales tax is really taking a hit, where gaming has just really taken a hit, I think people don't want to look at those sources to try to raise taxes, and they're looking towards mining, which has had this special spot in the Constitution, and which is, at this point in time, you know, doing better relative to all the other industries that we have.
Always seems like, you know, from a process standpoint, when it came to this session, there was a lot of that discussion. A lot of groups were pushing for revenue, finding ways to offset the potential cuts. But even though this was individually anticipated, I think there was a real feeling that this was going to be a short session, like kind of in, out, get things done. It carried on into 12 days. And mining, the debate over mining kind of came towards the very end, and often at midnight and 1:00 in the morning. So what were you guys' views on that from a process standpoint? I think that sometimes when, you know, if you're the average parent or teacher, living your life here in Nevada, trying to figure out what's going on during the middle of a special session, you know, they haven't, they say they're going to meet at 10 o'clock the next day, and then all of a sudden, you like turn to the YouTube at 1:00, and 2:00, and 3:00, and 4:00, and it's not there. So what are your guys' thoughts on how the process went? For people who, because we're looking at potentially, not potentially, we know there's going to most likely be another special session very soon, like, how does that whole process work? And if people want to follow it, what are things to expect and kind of understand in the way the process of a special session works at the legislature? And that can be for, that's a huge question. So anybody can jump in there.
Just as a reporter covering it, like, I like covering regular legislative sessions, but I hate covering special sessions, because, I mean, a lot of the days, we're just go to the building, and there's, it's a weird feeling, because there's like nobody else there. The public is not really allowed in the building right now. And you're standing around for like eight hours, and then all of a sudden, everything starts happening at 5:00, and then it goes until 3:00 in the morning. So I think what people should understand about that process is, it's not like all 63 legislators are all, have the same, like, clout, and are all weighing in on every decision. Like, it's very kind of hierarchical. It's, the legislative leadership are trying to cut deals, and the people that know how the budget works, and that's not everybody, are trying to figure out, how are we going to fix this? So, I mean, it's really in the hands of just a few people, and they're negotiating with the governor's office, and they're, the Senate's talking with the Assembly, and they don't always agree. So a lot of it's just a handful of people really trying to hammer out the details on what kind of everybody else is kind of supposed to go along with. You know, and I think one of the logistical things is just, you know, you can't just give a spreadsheet and that becomes law. You have to write it in a form of a bill. And, I mean, just that process of getting it into the format that it'll be written in, the Nevada revised statutes, is like a logistical challenge. The bills are, you know, sometimes over 100 pages long. So it's just, I mean, sometimes the delay was printing the bill, like formatting the bill. So that's why you can never really trust that when they say they're going to go in and we're going to vote on something at 10:00 a.m., you can't trust that it's going to start at 10:00 a.m. It could start at 6:00 p.m. You can't really trust that they're going to vote on what's on the agenda, because things move around. Things get combined, bills get merged together, things get just sidelined completely. And oftentimes, you just, it's hard to get information about exactly what's going on. So I suggest following reporters on Twitter who can say, okay, they're going in now.
That's what I do. I follow several of you who are fabulous about going, okay, now actually tune in. Something's happening. Nancy, Amanda, any things that as you watch, I know Amanda, you were up in Carson, even though you couldn't necessarily get in the building this time, but-
I was having coffee out front. Yeah, I mean, this was an especially bizarre, this is my first special session, but it was just bizarre in general, just because of the circumstances. But from, you know, a parent or a teacher's perspective, there still are quite a few ways to participate. You know, whether you're writing a letter in on a specific bill, or you're calling your legislator. I would normally say, you know, it's best to give public comment, which is, in ways, is easier than it normally is, and in ways, it's more difficult. Now, you can call in and participate, but you're calling in at, you know, 1:00 or 2:00 in the morning. So I don't know really if that's beneficial. I go to bed at like 9:00, so it wasn't for me. But, yeah, I think, you know, you can go on the legislative website. They've got different ways that you can provide input on bills. So there's still ways to stay engaged, even if you can't physically be there, or even stay up that late. So, you know, follow folks on Twitter, kind of know what's happening generally, and, you know, know what legislator to call or to write to. There's still a lot of ways to participate, even though it's a bit of an odd situation.
Yeah, I would just add that it felt messier than most special sessions, but I will share, I was not here- I was not here in 2003 when we had the special session with Governor Glenn. And so the only special sessions I've been sort of engaged or watching have been around the development incentives with Tesla a couple of years ago. And so, I mean, that was sort of neat and clean, and almost like one subject. And trying to deal with the budget in a special session, I think is just going to be messy in addition to sort of all the COVID-related challenges of not having people in. So it, I think everybody else has already acknowledged, it was hard to get in or to feel or figure out how to get engaged and even follow the session. So it'll be interesting to see how this next special session runs.
Yes.
What do you guys think we can expect during the next special session that is slated to happen very quickly now? And that's a question for anyone.
Yeah, I think, well, the governor has said tentatively it'll start Thursday. You know, I don't like to put any timeframe on it because I was very wrong last time when I thought it was going to be four or five days, and it turned out to be 12 days. I do think that because we're not dealing with a budget, it's just maybe a little simpler. The other thing is, one of the delays that we had was there was the hope that we could maybe raise revenue this session. One of the quirks in Nevada is that you have to have two-thirds support to raise taxes. So when they wanted to raise mining taxes, the Senate is one vote shy of having a Democratic two-thirds majority. So they had to go win over a Republican vote. And in the process of winning over that vote and then losing the vote, and then shaming the Republican that changed his mind, kind of like was a whole sideshow for 24 hours. So this time, we're dealing with policy, these things do not require a two-thirds majority. So we're in, the Democrats could easily push through things if they agree on them. So in that sense, I think it'll be a little more straightforward. I have hopes that it'll be shorter, but they do have a lot of things that are potentially going to be on the agenda, from criminal justice reform and policing reform measures to maybe doing something about enshrining, you know, in law that we do mail-in voting. That could be one thing they take up, and everybody else has millions of ideas on, on what else they want to do. I mean, there's, there's people that want to push for getting mining out of the Constitution and starting that process, which is something that they could do without getting two-thirds. So it depends on how much they want to take up, and just kind of expect the unexpected.
So you mentioned something that I, we talked a tiny bit at the beginning, but I think's important. So when a special session's called by the governor, he essentially sets kind of the parameters of what that special session can be about, right? And it's also a specific length of time, they can't be longer than 21 days, am I remembering that correctly?
20 days, yeah.
So, so when it comes to the next special session, we should know at least what kind of the general parameters that will be discussed when the governor's proclamation comes out? Is that the general idea?
Yeah, he sets the topic areas, and I'm not sure how broad they might be when it comes out in a proclamation, but we're meeting in Carson City on Thursday. I don't know how broad those terms will be, and I think it'll also depend on how much discussion has been had beforehand, and how much agreement is there between the legislators and the governor on where exactly we're going. You know, and I think, I think part of the delay in the first session was that the governor put out a proposal on Monday, and then the legislators were supposed to meet and work through it by Wednesday. So in reality, that's not a lot of time when you're talking about really important budget decisions. And so I think there was maybe not a lot that had been settled in, in terms of where, where things were going to be going with the budget.
Nancy or Amanda, did you want to weigh in on anything you're watching for, for the next special session? We don't know that education's going to be a hot topic or healthcare, but there's still community issues that could potentially affect, you know, all citizens, all residents of Nevada.
Yeah, I haven't, I'm not aware of anything education-related, and you know, I haven't actually heard much about it, other than what's been mentioned by Michelle. You know, I think voting is going to be a really critical one to deal with, you know, social justice issues, you know, kind of hearing what the progressive groups are hoping to happen, but, but nothing that I can think of that's really kind of education-oriented. I think that was mainly dealt with during this last special session, because it's mainly a budget issue.
Nancy, what are some of the issues the Glenn Center's been watching as both for the last session and what's coming next? What are some of those policy things happening in Nevada that are kind of on the radar?
Well, I think in the, before the last special session, when we were just looking at, you know, what the conversations would be around the budgets and where we would look at or see some cuts, we've been tracking mental health funding over the last decade or so to figure out, you know, what that would look like at the end of the special session. In generally, we've been, in general, we've been looking at CARES Act funding and sort of watching to see what the state of Nevada does with its coronavirus relief funds, which we now have, we've been dispersing, or the governor's been dispersing them over the last few months. We still have about $200 million left. I know in the last, during the last special session, again, not as part of the session, the governor announced, for example, that he was going to dedicate $50 million of those funds to commercial and home or rental eviction, commercial residential, rental support relief. And so we're hoping or waiting to see what else is done with the CRF funds. A lot of other states have used some of the coronavirus relief funds to stand-up programs to support some of our small businesses, or their small businesses, as well as, again, channeling some of that money to support schools as they reopen, either by dedicating the funds to PPP or masks or personal protective equipment, but also using some of those funds for broadband access, which is still a problem here in Nevada. And, you know, that topic actually was brought up by several legislators during the special session. And then we did a report a couple of years ago on policing reform, looking at northern Nevada. So we'll be looking to see what policies and reforms are discussed during this next special session.
I wanted to follow up on a couple of questions I've gotten as we've been talking. One of those, connectivity, that's an issue all across Nevada. You know, we hear it from a PTA standpoint, from our units that are in rural communities that don't have significant broadband access, especially to like stream a live lesson for school. And then obviously, we know down here where I live, and where most of us live in Clark County, a lot of times the infrastructure may be available, but people don't have access to it from an income standpoint and that digital divide. So it was talked about, like you said, Nancy, but, and we know that that CARES Act, that extra $50 million that was put into education for CARES Act, that could be used for connectivity, right, Amanda? So, but do we know how it's, like, do we know how it could be dispersed at this point? I know the Nevada Department of Education is in charge of that, but is that something that all districts are going to have access to? Is it going to need to be divided, you know, proportionally? Or is it going to be on an application basis, so that maybe some districts get it and others don't?
So, I'm sorry, you want to go ahead, Nancy? I know a little bit about...
I know more than I do.
Say you could, if you look at the language, it does, that CARES Act funding would support expanded, and our understanding during the session was that it would be stood up by MDE, the Department of Education, as like a block grant. So district rules could potentially apply for that pot of money. I think they're in the process of developing sort of what that looks like, but that was , at least what was shared in the special session. Amanda, you may have more information.
Yeah, at the last state Board of Education meeting, there was a discussion on kind of different strategies for use of those dollars, whether it's providing reimbursements to students, to student families that might need additional dollars, you know, under some sort of reduced-rate program under, you know, COCs or different, different provider. And it could mean providing hotspots in specific areas. So they went through, you know, very, and if you go through the, if you look at that meeting, they have a great presentation, kind of talking about the different options. From what I understand, there hasn't been any specific decision on that, but I believe it is, you know, as Nancy had mentioned, it's block granted out to the district, so they'll apply for that and have a plan going forward. So a lot of that's on the district to come up with that plan, but there are some different strategies out there.
Right, next I would like to ask about a program that many people are concerned about, and that is the GATE program, and how we are moving forward with that, given the recent budgetary cuts. Does anybody have any perspective on GATE and how it's being affected?
So I have heard that, you know, there was a perception that GATE was being slightly overfunded based on the formula. You know, just in full disclosure, we're currently, you know, suing the state for, you know, the funding formula and education funding, and one of the aspects of our lawsuit has to do with insufficient resources for GATE students. So no, I do not believe GATE is overfunded, and I think if you ask any GATE family, they'll tell you that they're not overfunded or over-resourced in any way. A lot of schools are sharing GATE instructors between several schools, GATE's not provided to nearly enough grades and doesn't even match what our state law is currently. So I think that $5 million hit is really going to have an impact for those students. We need to, just like everything in the state, there needs to be a serious investment in that program. These are students that, you know, have unique needs, like a lot of other students with unique needs. And I think, you know, going forward, we really need to take that seriously and not take it for granted, and I certainly don't think that it was overfunded to begin with. So, you know, we'll see what happens with that.
Maybe else can wait. It, it also, you know, one of the biggest concerns that I heard in testimony, again and again, was related to how the education cuts fell very heavily on students who are already disadvantaged, poverty, immigrant, black and brown students. So how do you guys see as, as we move forward as a state, and we've taken away some of those investments? And obviously, you know, as Nancy said, these were hard choices to make. It wasn't, if people were looking for the least worst option, just based on what the reality was. But how do you think we, as people who are interested in education and focused on serving all children, can keep a focus on those programs that were meant to provide those additional supports for students who are in more vulnerable situations or who have larger disproportionality? How do we keep that focus? And how do you see, maybe as we look at what happens next with the Commission on School Funding and the weighted funding formula, how do, how do all of those things somehow align? And how do we keep the focus on making sure those extra resources get put back for those kids who need it most?
Well, I think that's kind of the, you know, the multimillion-dollar question, you know, how are we going to do that? I think there's an opportunity in the regular session, and the special session's going to be very finite issues that people will be discussing, but the regular session's right around the corner. So I think there really needs to be an emphasis from the community that those programs are important. And I think you heard a lot of testimony during the special session, really kind of detailing how these programs have impacted students. Like I said before, we're slated to start transitioning to, you know, weighted funding, which would be kind of using these categorical program dollars and putting it into a weight that's distributed to all unique-need students. We've said from the beginning, you can't really do that without new investments, because right now, you know, you're going to decimate the resources in Zoom and Victory Schools, and at the same time, not really have an impact on the other English learners or at-risk students in the state. So, you know, we really have to start having a serious discussion on how we're going to fund those students and how we're going to actually provide those resources. And that will likely be in the form of, you know, developing new revenue. And if you look at some other states that have done this right, you know, it's not a quick process, it's not something that's, there's no silver bullet to this, but it's really kind of a sustained effort to, you know, each session, coming up with creative ideas and creative solutions to start pushing the ball forward, and having a target that you're trying to reach. And that's one of the interesting things about Nevada, we don't have any sort of North Star on education funding. We just kind of get some extra dollars and try to plug it in somewhere and hope for the best. So we really need to start developing that, and that was one of the roles of the School Funding Commission. They didn't come up with that North Star this time around, so it's really kind of sustaining that pressure, like, look, we need to know where we need to be and how we're going to get there. And that was their charge. They dealt with a lot of other issues during the past year, but they really need to deal with that fundamental issue.
And how that's on target to have, so the Commission on School Funding, which came out of 543 during the 2019 legislative session, will come before the legislature in 2021 for some significant review and decision points, right? So there's a lot to watch for on that. Michelle, I want to ask you a question that I got sent. PTA is a nonpartisan organization, but obviously, we're talking about one special session leading into another special session, and then we still have November, and then January, which is the regular session. So there's that big event in November, the elections. How does that all play into this process? You know, you've referenced that we have a significant majority for the Democrats right now, the governor, both houses are controlled by the Dems. You know, is, how are you guys, as a reporter, looking towards that, and what do you see coming next?
Yeah, I mean, I think, and I'd have to refresh my memory on where the puzzle pieces fall, we have a little like graph on like, where's the balance of power here? I mean, generally, I don't think there's much fear that the Democrats are going to like lose control. I think there's always a question on how, how wide that control is, and if they'll get a two-thirds majority, that would help a lot of the tax proposals have a lot easier pathway through the legislature. I think people are, you know, concerned about how, what their actions are, what they're doing right now this summer is going to affect their reelection prospects. One of the dynamics, I think, is people, people had to have, had to cut programs this past session, and so I think this second session is an opportunity for them to have things to take back to people and say, hey, look at what we, you know, were able to pass that was a positive thing. And I think another dynamic that we're seeing is the Senate Majority Leader, Nicole Canizaro, is, is in this extremely swingy district in the Summerlin area, and so I think she's really trying to fight for her survival in November. And so I think you're going to see a lot of target on her back, and, you know, just probably a lot of considerations on how is whatever I decide to do in this next session going to look to voters in November. So I think you're seeing sort of those dynamics at play as we head into November.
Thank you. We are almost out of time. I am just going to check the feed for any other questions that came in. One of the things on the education budget that people are still wondering is, when does this all actually come down to districts? So, you know, like I mentioned, there's districts meeting tonight to try to figure out what their plan is, whether it's hybrid or distance, you know, it's split all across the state, what people are choosing. Teachers are coming back in a week or two in some districts. And yet, do districts actually know what these budget cuts look like in their local budgets yet? Do we know that?
That's a great question, and I don't know. I know that there's different dispersment dates, and I'm trying to remember off the top of my head how that's done. And you probably know better than, than I do, Rebecca, on kind of how schools do their budgets and the timelines on that. But, and right now, districts know what they're getting. I don't know exactly when that dispersment starts, but I think, you know, SOTs right now, going forward, are going to have to start making those decisions on budget cuts, at least in Clark County, where that's the process. But I don't know exactly what the dispersment dates are or anything like that, I don't know if somebody else does.
Yeah, I know here, that's been a big question, because it is, it's, we're kind of kind of balancing two things, the cuts coming down from the legislature and... The cuts coming down from the legislature and then also there's a lot of question as to what enrollment numbers will look like across the state as people make different choices based on whatever the public districts choose. And so there's, it seems like in our current situation, we continue to have the same thing, that there's so many moving puzzle pieces that don't reveal themselves with the final answer until right when it needs to happen, which can be a little confusing. So I'll hand it back over to Kali to ask our kind of final wrap-up question for the night.
Thank you. So ladies, looking ahead in 2021, what do you see as the priorities for our state legislature?
Can all of you get to answer this?
You already heard my rant.
I mean, I think in this, you know, situation we're in, every, every month seems like a year and things can change, you know, so rapidly. I think we had a very different idea of what 2021 would look like and probably high hopes on what, what that would mean for education. And now we're sort of in survival mode. So I think, I think the people that, among the legislators that have talked about the future and what 2021 looks like are very concerned. You know, they don't want to see us kind of really have a relapse of cases and a relapse of shutdowns and things that would further cause chaos, you know, sustained unemployment, some wave of evictions. I mean, these things that could really take a toll on the state budget. So I think we're going to, I think people are really just kind of playing it by ear right now. It's hard to, I, I think they're going to try to stop the bleeding. I think they're going to try to be looking at how do we, I mean, I, we're probably going to have more cuts, you know, in the coming session. How do we do that in a way that's not going to harm people? And, and I think another point is that the legislature has of course been looking to the federal government and asking for additional help. And that could change things if the federal government does come through in some way and offer, you know, a big, a big influx of cash for us that can be used to fulfill basic budget needs and not just these emergency COVID-related spending items. So, yeah, unfortunately, I think it, it could be a rough session and one more about just kind of surviving than necessarily building.
Yeah, I would add, I think it'll just, it'll be challenging to think about revenue if our economy is still, you know, just, you know, hasn't recovered. And we're still, you know, hanging on. And so then how do we, you know, avoid cuts? And if there is either in the absence of a revenue conversation, how do we sort of support dislocated workers, retrain workers, you know, through support our drivers of economic development, which are higher ed, workforce development sector agencies in the absence of new revenue? So I think there are a lot of challenges ahead.
I think the timeline is one of those things all of us have been challenged by. I think we all thought in March that this, I don't think any of us thought that in July, almost August now, we would all be sitting here still mostly doing everything through Zoom. Not all, but most. And so that, how long everything will last, but also how, how innovative we as a state can be, right? And the response and what can happen next.
And, you know, Rebecca, if I could just like add to that, you asked like earlier, you know, sort of, how do we support our kids who are sort of most vulnerable, right, with all the budget cuts? And I, what's been interesting is, you know, where the private, the public sector has had to pull back because of budget cuts. It's been so inspiring to see our private sector and our nonprofit sector come together and fill some of those gaps. And people are coming together to find solutions in ways that I didn't see happen after the 2008 Great Recession. And so I think there's a lot to work with. And I think, you know, Amanda just sort of identified a long-term strategy. But even, you know, how we support our kids and, you know, continue to recover, I think it's going to take all of us, the private sector and nonprofit sector, you know, elected officials coming together and be really creative about finding collaborative, innovative solutions.
Thank you.
It's just a lot to work with.
I think that is a great point to end on there because I think that's true. There's a lot of challenges, but there's also a lot of opportunity. And especially, like you said, when we look at as a community solution versus assuming that the legislature can solve all of this up in Carson City. Because I, for me, one of the biggest takeaways from the pandemic situation when it comes to education is that we have proven to the world, I think, how essential education and public education is to the fabric of our society. It touches so many aspects of life. And the pandemic with its healthcare and housing situation, all of those things are how we live our life, how we function. And so it is, as we, are we going to as a community decide to be creative and find solutions, even if they're things that we didn't think were possible because we didn't know they needed to be a year ago? And so thank you, Kali, for co-hosting with me tonight. And Nancy, Amanda and Michelle for this great discussion about the special session. It was, you know, I don't think anybody wants to have that as their last memory, but we also know that they were trying to make the choices that hurt the least. And then we can continue to engage with our legislature as we move into the next several months. So thank you again for joining us tonight. If you're watching this on replay, you can also catch it on YouTube as of tonight or tomorrow morning. And thanks again and have a good night, ladies.
Thank you.
Good night, everybody.